Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes, discussion and possible action and vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of September 3rd, 2019, to be accepted and approved by the town council. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti, any questions? Anybody in all those opposed? All those in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Okay. Proposed ordinances, notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council would consider passage of the following proposed ordinances. Number two, ordinance 19 dash 012, an ordinance amending chapter 19, article 10, section 19 dash 47B of the code of ordinance of the town of North Providence entitled, "Two-way stop signs to provide for a stop sign on West River Parkway at the intersection of River Road." Got a motion to adopt ordinance 19 dash 012.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Amerigi, all those in favor? All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, ordinance 19 dash 013, an ordinance amending chapter 19, article 10, section 19 dash 30 of the code of ordinance of the town of North Providence entitled, "No parking on certain streets generally to provide for no parking on Garfield Street." Got a motion to adopt ordinance 19 dash 013.
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? Anybody in all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. You have to come up.
Good evening, my name is Tina Maderas, I live on 61 Garfield Street.
Thank you.
I've heard nothing about our street becoming a one-way, or no parking, or any of these things. When do people make these decisions that affect multitudes of people who live there? I've lived there for 29 years. People have parked on Garfield Street for 29 years, why all of a sudden is this not acceptable?
Councilman?
Sure. So, I'll take this up, this is something that a multitude of your neighbors brought to my attention personally, I believe it was last May. So we've been working on this issue since then, so basically a year and a half. We don't, and I'm not going to speak on behalf of the town clerk, but per Rhode Island state law, there is a process. So anytime we institute a new ordinance, it has to go out to be advertised, our agendas have to be put online. So there is public notice given in that sense.
Where is it being publicized? I look around.
Secretary of State's website. Okay, and also you can get there from the town's website. We're going to address the one-way on Franklin, I think that's part of what you're getting to later, and we are going to take care of that. That was an initial remedial measure that was taken to try to address the issue of the overflow of traffic and cut-throughs between Mineral Spring and Charles Street.
I get Garfield, it's a nightmare down one end, I get it. But I don't think asking everybody not to park on it, like pick one side or something.
It is just, it is just one side, and it's only a section of Garfield. There was a very serious incident a couple of months ago where an ambulance-
You couldn't get through.
Correct, and that's the impetus for that, and the police went out, they took measurements, and they realized that in fact, emergency vehicles cannot get through with parking on both sides. You know that on that street, a lot of people who have lived there for generations have stayed in those homes, and now-
And they have now four kids.
And now four cars, and so that's why this measure had to be taken, so-
But the way this reads, it reads no parking, so I'm not-
On one side. On one side of the street.
Alright.
Yeah, so basically from the back of the liquor store until the stops.
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Hi, what number house is yours?
61, I'm right, the house that Ferncliff comes up, Franklin comes up.
And which side of-
The house that has the yard and Franklin's there.
So Franklin, are you more towards Mineral Spring Avenue or back?
I'm dead in the center. Franklin is where I'm looking. I look down from my yard down Franklin Street.
Oh, so you look straight down.
Right there, yeah.
Understand, so I can just read the ordinance really quickly for you. Let me pull it up just so you can see it. Says no parking on the easterly side of Garfield Street, from the northerly most point of the property line of Platteau Lot 3, 135, continuing to the corner of Franklin Street. So that's from the liquor store on Mineral Spring Avenue up to Franklin Street. So that section that you referenced, that's really tight, and you know that-
That is.
So that's what we were trying to do, is to try to remedy that situation there.
So you're looking to park only on one side?
That's correct.
Because some of those homes truly don't have a driveway.
The ones going in the other direction, so that's why we picked the side that does have the driveway.
So that's why I'm just-
Yeah, yes. And like I said, not to speak for Councilman Famigetti because it's on his, it's one of his agenda items, but we're going to address the Franklin Street issue. We realize that we no longer need that to be a one-way with the three-way stop, the one, sorry, no parking on one side and-
It's very confusing.
And no through trucking.
A portion isn't a one-way, and then half of it is.
So we'll all be taken care of.
And we're going to get to that.
Yeah.
I think there was a, obviously there's a traffic situation in there, and especially when you have that neighborhood and the growth of that neighborhood.
Are they going to still allow trucks down Garfield?
No.
There's already a-
To go to the liquor store and things like that, because that's also a huge problem.
There's no trucking coming from Mineral Spring Avenue onto Garfield Street, we've already passed that.
But they'll be able to come up Franklin and make the left, make the right onto?
Well, if that proves to be a problem, then that's something that we can address there too. See, these issues cannot be solved with one ordinance, sometimes you need to try a few different things out. Making Franklin a one-way street was trying to remedy the situation with people cutting through. But now we're trying different things, and Franklin Street might not make sense being one-way anymore, so that's why we're addressing that.
I came here to express the Franklin issue, I didn't realize the Garfield.
So, we'll see you in a, we'll see you in a few minutes. Thank you.
Okay, motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number four, liquor license, notice was given of a public hearing to be held this date in the Providence Journal on September 17th and 24th, 2019, for a new BV liquor license for Palmer Bar and Grill LLC, 1449 Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do we have anyone here for Palmer?
Good evening, Council President, I'm Lou DuQuatro, attorney for Palmer Bar and Grill LLC, and I represent the establishment and its owner, Laura Ashworth, who's right beside me. So we worked with the clerk's office to provide the bottom notice as required by law, provided other documentation, and we're seeking approval from the town council tonight.
Hey, thank you, does anybody have any questions for Mr. DuQuatro?
What are the planned hours of operation? What are the planned hours of operation?
7:00 AM till midnight.
7:00 after midnight, so seven days a week?
Without Monday, Monday will be closed.
Okay, any other questions, councilman?
When, hi, I'm Mrs. Ashworth, would you plan on opening if approved tonight?
Would we plan on opening?
Yes.
One willing in the next 14 days.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, do you have a motion to approve the liquor license?
So moved.
The motion been made, go ahead.
I have another question.
Go ahead.
So I assume there's a relationship between this and Palmer on 44?
Yes, Palmer on 44 is owned by Laura's husband, David, so they both operate both.
And so will you be the manager, generally on duty at this one, at this location?
Michael Terry and my son, Robert Kennerson, will be, and myself and David, the four of us are pretty much operating both.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion to approve? I know, I know there's someone, I have to take the motion first, then I'll open the floor for questions. Okay, is there a motion to approve the victualling license? The liquor license? Motion's been made by Councilman Amerigi. Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, is there any questions from the audience? Done this a couple of times, thanks. Just please state your name for the record.
So my name is Tamika Thibodeau, I live on 16 Terry Street, which is two houses down for this restaurant, that's going to be like the third restaurant. I have a lot of concerns because the way that their parking lot is, people park on our street for previous restaurants. I'm concerned that my children play in the area along with the other neighborhood children, and I'm just concerned about people going cutting through our streets and not making it safe when extending, you know, another restaurant there.
Okay.
And then my neighbors did not get the notice like I did, I got a certified letter, so I, you know, this is my first time hearing about this.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, can we work on that?
Yeah, I can assure you the restaurant's going to abide by all the laws and regulations of the town of North Providence in connection with the parking in the area. If there becomes any issues with parking in the neighborhood, the establishment will definitely work on it with the town council and the police to make sure that doesn't happen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President, sorry.
This is, just regards to the parking, you're going to open for breakfast, I'm assuming, this is the reason for 7:00 AM. As you probably know, a lot of the parents from Wayland School park there to walk their kids across the street, how are you going to handle that? There might be a little overflow of parking there.
We're actually quite not sure, we don't know how the other establishment handles that, but I think so many once they see that it's now to be open, parking to pick up their children, if that doesn't happen, they will have to address it.
Okay, just, just from my knowledge of the situation, the previous owners had kind of like an informal agreement with the parents that as long as they weren't there for longer than like five minutes, they wouldn't really, you know-
Okay, motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you. Item number five, you can stay here. Stay there.
Louis, back up.
Victualling license, town council to consider approval of victualling license for Palmer Bar and Grill, 1449 Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Any questions on the victualling license? Motion to approve. Motion been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any further questions? Anybody in all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, item number six, liquor license, notice was given of a public hearing to be held this date in the Providence Journal on September 17th and 24th, 2019, for a new BV liquor license for 787 Restaurant and Lounge LLC, DBA 787 Restaurant and Lounge, 1270 Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Is there anyone here from 787 Restaurant Lounge? Just please state your name for the record.
Liz Vasquez.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Vasquez? Go ahead.
What are your hours of operation?
We're going to be open from 2:00 in the afternoon till 1:00. On, we're closed on Mondays, so Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday we'll have those hours. And then weekends will be from 11:00 to 1:00. We'll have breakfast basically on the weekends, every other day is just lunch and dinner.
And who's going to be managing the establishment?
I'm going to be the manager.
Can you just kind of talk about your experience a little bit?
My experience, yeah, I used to be a restaurant manager on Federal Hill in Providence for Blend. So it's basically kind of like the same thing that we're trying to bring over here.
Same type of food?
It's same type of food, yes.
Councilman?
Have you, in your other restaurants, have you had liquor licenses before, and you feel comfortable with dealing with distributing liquor to people, being careful of over-serving people?
Yep, so I've had a liquor license prior to that. I worked there, I also managed a place in Pawtucket until like last week, because I don't have time anymore, I'm trying to get this place open. But yeah, I feel extremely comfortable, I have, you know, security measures in place, staff that we're bringing in is all trained, you know, so we're taking everything into consideration.
Councilman?
You said you had a, you had a previous liquor license before Blend?
No, 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 I didn't have a liquor license, I, we have, we're tip certi-, I'm tip certified. But I have experience, you know, managing a place that serves liquor.
Gotcha. And you said that you were going to take some security measures, can you talk about that a little bit?
So, we're going to make sure that our staff is trained for the weekends, because I anticipate that it's going to be a little bit, you know, busier and stuff for the weekends. We're planning on hiring a security company to be there, just in case, just because you never know.
Do you know who that's going to be?
I have the name, but I have it over there. They do a lot of places on the hill.
If you could just provide that to us after that.
Definitely.
Are you concentrating more on food or more on liquor, what's your-
Food, yeah, we have an extensive menu.
And you'll be serving food for the entire time you're open?
Yep, yes.
Councilman? I thought you had a question. Is there any further questions? Okay, do you have a motion to approve the liquor license? Motion been made by Councilman Matone, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juisty, any questions from the public, sir? Just come up, state your name for the record, please? Could you just step aside?
Yeah.
Thank you.
How are you, Bob Deaton out of 87 Verdi Street, so I'm directly behind it, it's the old O'Gee's Restaurant, Ken, you know where it is. So, best of luck to you, by the way, alright? I'm just curious, my hearing isn't so well, hours of operation?
So we're going to be open from 2:00 to 1:00, and then weekends we'll be open from 11:00 to 1:00.
To 1:00 o'clock, and you'll be serving liquor till that time as well?
Till 12:45.
12:45, and you said you're going to have security?
We're going to have security.
Okay.
Definitely.
Keep it under control, please, that's all that I ask.
Oh, we will, no worries.
Alright, because I lived there, we've lived there since 1954, and you know, we've dealt through O'Gee's, and that was a great experience and everything else, and then there's been a period between it, it wasn't so good.
We're trying to keep, we're trying to bring something very classy, so it's more low-key, we're trying to basically target like the whole audience, so we don't have the lack of, we want to have a little more-
No nightclubs?
No, sorry.
Loud music?
No, there'll be music, but it's, it'll be controlled.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just one last thing, if you realize there's no parking on the street.
On the middle, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, so that's always got a block of footprints as well, because you've got the front and the back, but they seem to kind of pop up because what's happening is they go up the school to lock in, which recently that was approved, and so now that thing's filling up really quick, and it's also got a little kid on the side over there, with about five or six guys that are just sitting there all the time, so that thing fills up really quick.
So I know the owner is making some changes, and a lot of the vehicles that he has parked there, he's moving to his property, so we'll have more space.
Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Alright. Thank you, sir, thank you. Okay, Councilman Amerigi had a follow-up question?
So, not even a question, just a comment.
Yeah.
I see Mr. Manzo behind you, and he's from that area as well. I would just suggest, especially if you're going to have security, the issue at that location has always been when people leave into the back parking lot.
Okay.
And lingering, a lot of noise, you know, and it's not always harmful, but it's just, you know, at 1:00 AM, it's a very tightly condensed neighborhood, so if you could just keep an eye on that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, just step aside, we have another audience. State your name for the record.
Anthony Manzo, I also live on Verdi Street, and I'd like to congratulate you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you so much.
It's always nice to see a vacant building occupied in North Providence. Good luck to you.
Thank you so much, sir.
Okay, a motion's been made, and seconded, all those in, Councilman Matone has a question?
Can I actually, can I make a request to, to put a condition on the license? In hearing what Councilman Amerigi said, and in dealing what I deal with on my day-to-day basis, one of the things that I do see all the time is that a place can run completely responsibly, have no issues, and then people leave at the end of the night and they wreak havoc in the neighborhoods. So one thing, considering, at least on the weekends, considering they're going to have security there anyway, if one of the conditions could be that they post security in the parking lots, make sure that people are getting in their cars and leaving in a reasonable period of time. Frankly, I think it helps the establishment, because it prevents people from lingering and causing problems, so if it was mine, I would do it anyway, but I would ask that if we could modify, make that condition appeal on many more.
I agree with you.
Okay, Councilman Matone made the motion, would you amend your motion?
To include that condition. Did I make the motion?
Yeah. Okay, that was in the form of an amended motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famigetti, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Stay up here.
Stay up here?
Yes.
Okay.
Item number seven, victualling license, town council to consider approval of a victualling license for 787 Restaurant and Lounge LLC, 1270 Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence. Is there any questions on the victualling license? Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion been made by Councilman Amerigi, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Juisty, any questions? Anybody in all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number eight, entertainment license, town council to consider approval of an entertainment license for 787 Restaurant and Lounge, 1270 Mineral Spring Avenue, North Providence. Is there any questions on the entertainment license, Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Council President, aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Entertainment, what kind of entertainment do you plan to provide?
So we want to have DJs, and maybe karaoke nights during the week, but mostly like DJs in the weekends. And maybe some live bands, it all depends, not all the time, but maybe once or twice a month.
Councilman?
Are you planning on, well, so, to be perfectly honest, I haven't been in that place since it's been open, and those tables were not movable, I don't know what's in there now.
Oh.
So, my question to you is, what's your plan for, as the night gets a little bit later, are you planning on moving tables, allowing dancing, doing that kind of thing?
So, I don't know if you remember how it used to be, but all the hibachi tables are out, all the hoods are out, so it's basically like an open space, we can move them. The only thing that's going to be attached is going to be like to the walls, you know, it's going to be like seating areas with some movable tables in front, so everything's movable. My plan is honestly to leave it the way that it is, that way we don't have that much of that club crowd, that people are going to think it's like, you know, dancing and all that. My plan is to just, if we provide the van, the van's going to be there, but nothing's going to be moved, the tables are there, it's a restaurant, you know?
Councilman Famigetti?
I also have a little bit of knowledge of the inside, where would you set up the entertainment in the building? Would it be more towards Mineral Spring or towards the back of your apartment space?
Um, where the, this side, I don't even know, so where the hibachi used to be?
Yep.
Alright, right in like the center, there's actually like a, like facing the rental car, right that way, like that way.
Okay.
Is there any other questions in the count?
I have a question.
Councilman Ferriero?
When you do have a DJ there, are you planning on having the DJ on the weekends or throughout the week?
The weekends, I'm not sure throughout the week, because we, I don't know, you know, it might not be worth it for us.
Right.
You know, we're going to have music, we have, you know, a system. We are planning on having karaoke, you know, during the week, that's for sure.
And at what time do you plan on stopping the music?
Everything at 12:45.
Everything at 12:45?
So everybody can just get out.
Wind down, yep.
Yep.
I actually have a question for a legal counsel, is this entertainment license a yearly license?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Is it a what?
Can I make a proposal?
Wait, wait, ask the question again.
Is the entertainment license a yearly license?
It should be, you can have a review if you want.
Yeah, so, I would be uncomfortable issuing this for a full year. I would ask, and I don't know, I think it's possible, but I would request for a shorter-term license, that way, if there are any issues, we can deal with it. My concern is that I'm, I'm hoping for the best.
Don't worry, I'm good.
But if, if, you know, if the entertainment is, if you have a great restaurant, that's great, if the entertainment becomes problematic, that's a concern of mine. Because that could, that's, in my opinion, is the most disruptive part of an establishment, the food and the liquor, you can manage that responsibly, entertainment is what can get a little bit out of hand. So, so I would request that if we do grant it, and I'm not necessarily opposed to that, but that we do it for a shorter duration than a year, if at all possible.
I think that's a good idea, I actually agree with that.
We want to give a six-month review.
A day, a year, we got people coming for a day, so.
Yeah, what does this council think is a three-month review?
I think three months is perfect.
Whoa, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, when do you plan on opening if granted permission?
Um, like three weeks, it's going to take us like two to three weeks.
February? Four months?
Yeah, February.
Okay.
Okay, you want to make a motion to grant that license?
So you want to grant a four-month license, or you want to grant a review in four months, but you want, you want to grant a four-month license?
I want to grant a four-month license.
Yes, so just don't use the review, so we're going to grant a motion to approve a four-month license.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I would make a motion to approve a four-month entertainment license, based on the description that she gave, and in four months I would ask for her to be rescheduled, and then we would decide whether we want to issue another license, and at that time maybe we'll feel comfortable doing for a year.
It's a good idea, Councilman, thank you. Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Matone, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Amerigi, any questions? Anybody in all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, good luck.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Item number nine, victualling license, town council to consider approval of a victualling license for Jorge M. Cruz, DBA La Casa del Sabo, 2053 Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Is Jorge Cruz here? Okay, do you have a motion to continue this till next month? Motion's been made by Councilman Juisty, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? Anybody in all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 10, negative impact on neighborhood, Catherine Feist and other members of the neighborhood wish to appear before the town council to address the negative impact that the Duke Kitchen and Spirits has had on the neighborhood since its opening. This item was continued to this month. Is Ms. Feist here? Is anyone else here that would like to speak from the neighborhood? Sir, just come to the microphone.
Mr. President, I'm going to recuse.
Okay, just to know for the record, Councilman Famigetti's recusing on this issue.
Good evening, my name is Anthony Andriosi, I live in Nine Progress Avenue. I was out of town the last meeting you had here, I guess in September, but I was aware, made aware from the neighbors of the neighborhood, about the doors being open in that establishment. Well, after that time of the meeting, I have noticed the doors are still open in that establishment. Also, I noticed they have a grill in the back, it was put to my attention they're using the grill. If they're supposed to use that grill or not, we'll know, but, uh, a few other issues. Noticed rodents, I didn't have rodents in the back of my yard, unless they moved a lot of debris since they did the construction work, because there was a food stand there before in the past, so now we noticed them. Okay, that's all I can say at this moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I just want to note for the record that Councilman Bacala and I went to the establishment last week and met with the owner of the property and the owner of the establishment, and we went through a bunch of changes we'd like to see happen, and they agreed to all of them. If you'd like to come up, Mr. Royal, Mr. Manzo, just kind of explain what you intend on doing there, started with the doors. I know that was a concern of myself, Councilman Bacala, Councilman Juisty. And the people smoking, you're going to move them to the front now, correct?
I'm Anthony Manzo again, I'm the owner of the property at the Duke Establishment. Some, the problems we'd like to go over and work with the council on fixing, or whatever problems we have. One of the problems is the doors being open, so there's two doors on the left-hand side, and there's one door in the front, we're going to make sure that those doors are closed. There was a hinge on one of the doors that wasn't working properly, we were in the process of getting that fixed, because you know, a customer will come in, open the door, go in, and the door will, you know, return. So, and we wouldn't even know that it was open, they're working in the kitchen and all, but we got the, you know, the arm coming back to fix that. The smoking, instead of being in front of the building, the bathrooms are to the right of the building, and there's a door there, so we put them on that side away from the neighborhood. He, there was a couple of potties that he had, and they had a grill in the back that they would grill up some burgers, that's been removed, they don't have that any longer, so that won't be a problem. And if there's any other problems that ever exist, don't ever hesitate to contact us, and we'd like to always work with you and fix whatever problems you ever have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, item number 11, the amount of liquor licenses in North Providence, Anthony Costanzo III would like to address the council concerning the number of liquor licenses remaining open in the town. Is Mr. Costanzo here? Okay, do we have a motion to continue, item number 11, till next month? Motion been made by Councilman Juisty, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? Anybody in all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number 12- Item number twelve, snow removal on the sidewalks of Centerdale. Anthony Costanzo the third would like to address the council concerning the snow removal on the sidewalks of Centerdale. Assuming Mr. Costanzo is not here, do I have a motion to continue this to next month? Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the eyes have it. Item number thirteen, no parking sign on Third Street. Ralph Jemani requests to appear before the council regarding a no parking sign across from seventeen Third Street. Mr. Jemani.
Ralph Michael Jemani?
Thank you.
You want to go first, you want me to go first?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I support and I agree with your study. I'm concerned with my family's safety and the neighbors' families on the rest of the street. When there are vehicles on both sides of the street, emergency vehicles cannot get through unsafe. And what I, what, another issue I had Sunday night, uh, my neighbor had a party. I wasn't invited, but anyways. Sunday night, Sunday night they had a party, and I had to call the police to move cars across the street blocking my driveway. And that's it.
Okay, um, where are we at right now with this study, uh, in the ordinance committee?
We, uh, had Lieutenant Tavrosi go out there. We were, uh, ready to give an additional, um, twenty-five feet, I believe, for, uh, Mr. Jemani, but there were some other ideas talked about. So Lieutenant Tavrosi has to go back in on Third Street to take a look at it again. It's still in the ordinance committee, and it'll be up again this month when I have my meeting. And that's where I would expect that Lieutenant Tavrosi comes to us with his recommendation, we'll work with Mr. Jemani to solve this issue, and then bring it before the full council.
Okay, thank you, Councilman.
See you next month.
Thank you, Mr. Jemani, okay. Item number fourteen, lights at fifteen ninety-nine Smith Street. Minimum housing Officer Mike Connavalli requests to appear before the council to address the steps taken to correct the issue of the lights causing an issue for resident at twelve, I mean, two Turcoon Street. I'm going to read Mr. Connavalli's letter into the record. Mike Connavalli cannot make the town council meeting tonight due to illness. On the matter of two Turcoon Street, Al's Electric is going to adjust the light at fifteen ninety-nine Smith Street, rear parking lot next week. He needs a bucket truck to do the job. Sorry I'm not there to explain, Mike Connavalli, building inspector. I know someone's here from Turcoon Street that would like to address the council. If you could just state your name for the record?
I'm actually the owner of fifteen ninety-nine Smith Street, my name is Melissa Perali.
Thank you.
Um, I have been working with Mr. Connavalli, who's been very gracious, um, very helpful. We do need a bucket truck because they're twenty-five feet up. My concern is, last year, it was the parking issue. This year, it's the light issue. I don't think it's ever going to stop. I'm trying to run the business, I'm trying to run a successful business. Um, it's been non-stop with this neighbor, unfortunately. Um, I'm getting quotes from five hundred dollars to a thousand dollars right now to adjust those lights. And I want documentation, if possible, that if I do this, this is going to be the end. And unfortunately, with this neighbor, I don't feel it will be. I've provided documentation to show you how the lights are pointed. I've also provided documentation on what she does to us, unfortunately. Um, she shines the spotlights on anyone exiting my building, the driveway. She videos us, she takes pictures of us. Um, what else? Uh, there's, um, basically a camera shot, and you can see my truck pulling out of the driveway, and she's shining the light on me as I pull out. And then two minutes later, when I leave, her lights go off. So she's targeting my business, and it's, it's getting very frustrating right now because I feel as a business owner, I don't have many rights. Um, the parking signs went up, and I've provided photos in here to show you that, um, she doesn't obey the parking signs. She parks and blocks my driveway. So, again, I, I don't know what legal rights I have, and it's getting very frustrating because I don't think this is going to be the end. And I shouldn't have to every month look at the Secretary of State's website to see if my building is on there again. So I'm looking for suggestions on how to handle the situation from you, and try to be a respectable neighbor.
Okay, is there anyone here from Turcoon Street? Okay. Um, the only suggestion I would have is, once the light is fixed, that is, to comply with the zoning, the town zoning ordinance. That's why you're dealing with Mr. Connavalli. Um, as far as the parking issues are concerned, I haven't gotten any phone calls since you and I went out there, Councilman, right?
She was the only one complaining, that was, that's the reason. So I, they've, they've encouraged me to call the police when she's out there parking illegally. However, it, it's, it's like a waste of town money to have someone come over there, it's...
Well, you've been responsive to me, I know you had a party there, and you would call me that one time to let me know, and, uh, one of the lieutenants went by and monitored, and there was, there was no trouble there, so, um...
I, I just, I feel like it's, it's a tax on the, the town. I mean, I can't even utilize my building right now for events. I, my training for my agents, I'm renting halls. Anytime I had an event at the office, I always got a valet and told them they could not park on Turcoon Street. I mean, I've done everything that I thought I could do to satisfy this neighbor and help the situation and be a friendly neighbor, but it's not working. And I just, I'm afraid that I'm going to spend the five hundred to a thousand dollars to adjust the lights, and it's not going to end.
How about after this light situation is resolved, myself, Councilman Di Lorenzo, and Councilman Matone represents the area, and I'll come and meet with you yourself, and then maybe we can come up with some suggestions to, you know?
I just, I unfortunately, I, I hope it will, would be resolved, but I've, she's had people call me, I've given them my number, they have my number. Have her call me, have her walk in my business and talk to me as a human being, instead of constantly going to the council or the town.
Is there any other, Councilman?
This, just a comment, and thank you, this is the first time I personally have heard your side of the story. I mean, I think all of us on this council are, um, with it enough to know that if she now comes with a new complaint that's not currently before us, I think we're going to view that with a little bit of skepticism. So, I'm glad you brought this to our attention. I mean, this, as, as far as I know, this is the only pending complaint. If this issue's rectified, and then all of a sudden, new complaints start coming up, I think we're going to take that into consideration.
I'm just worried that they're going to keep coming. If you look at the file at zoning on my building before I purchased it, I looked, and there's letters. I've been in contact with the prior owners, and they've said, Melissa, she's just not going to stop.
Councilman Di Lorenzo?
You know, we, we've tried in the past to help you, as you know, we've all talked.
You all have, you've been very gracious, and I appreciate everything.
And I, I say that for a reason. I say that because we, as a town council, are extremely business-friendly. We do what we can for all the businesses as we can see here tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're not trying to size, swipe you at all, we're trying to help you along, and we will help you, we will make it right. So now everyone knows this could be the last one, we have to look forward to the, to the next one. That's all, we just, we're trying to help.
But there's nothing that we can put in writing that if I spend the money for the lights...
You're, you're...
To have them adjust it. If, if the town council comes out, makes sure the adjustment is okay, will I be all set?
Well...
Well, that we'd have to... That, that, we don't have, that's why we have a zoning official, you know?
You're looking at a personality, a personality conflict there, and something that I know is kind of hard to, that's an easy term, personality conflict. It's kind of hard for us to say what she is or not going to do.
I'm going to try to stay professional, so.
Yeah, right, so.
Just one, just one question.
You also?
Is there a timer on the lights, and what, what are the hours the lights on, and is it bothering her, like at midnight, and this thing shining through her?
They go off at nine thirty PM.
They go off?
At nine thirty PM. And, uh, the town just took...
So dusk to nine thirty, let's just say now it's getting...
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep, um, I'm, I'm handicapped, I have, um, I, I'm definitely afraid of black ice. So I usually work sometimes until nine thirty, so I want to make sure that I can see. Uh, the town took down the, um, the streetlight for her also, and now it's very, very dark there at night, very dark. So my lights stay on until nine thirty? Every night, and they go off. And I didn't think that that was too late.
Well, the streetlight, I think, was removed to try to appease everyone. We thought that might have solved the problem, and that's the reason why we did, apparently not.
No, she, her goal is to get the zoning changed on my building, and she's stated that to many people.
Well, I, I will say that, that has been asked, and, you know, I, I always say you can't fault the building owner. You know, at this point, you're running a business there, and, and that's that.
That's what I honestly am afraid of. I'm, I'm honestly afraid that I purchased the building as commercial, and the zoning is going to get changed by her numerous complaints, and I think that's what the goal is.
That's not...
Okay, alright, well, that makes me feel better.
Councilman.
I, I know we've talked to, uh, Mike Connavalli about this before, but I, I don't know what the timetable is for you to spend this money. Does it make sense for us to have a conversation with Mike Connavalli before she invests this money, uh, so that we know exactly what's going on? My, my, my concern is, I, I've seen the lights, the lights are bright, I mean, I, 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 I can understand, the lights are bright.
I, I acknowledge that they are bright. I, I changed the light bulbs when I bought the building. Um, the light bulbs were out. It cost me eight hundred and thirty-five dollars to get the bucket truck to change two light bulbs. So it's, it's an expense, and I just want to make sure I make it, and I'm...
And, and, yeah, and I, and I understand that, so, I guess, uh, and, and maybe this is something that I could do on my own, but I, I, I guess what I'm curious about is, originally what I heard was the lights are going to be tilted in a certain way? So, so I guess my question is, to me, that's not a zoning issue, that's, she's doing something to make the situation potentially better. But my, my question is, is it a zoning issue or is it not a zoning issue? And I'm still not a hundred percent sure about that.
It's a zoning issue.
Yeah. But, but how, but how does tilting lights change the zoning?
There's a section, there's a section of the zoning code that says if you have these type of lights...
Yep.
You have to, you can't, you have to, have to be directed towards your property and not to any adjoining property. There's actual section, uh, we, we took this up at the...
Yeah, section seven oh five, I believe.
Okay.
Yep.
The pictures, the pictures that I gave?
Supposed to be tilted in.
So because they're, because they may be tilted at...
If they're shining on the abutting property.
Gotcha, okay, alright. So that makes more sense.
Councilman.
So, the light is being adjusted by, from this, from the thing we have here, from Al's Electric. Are you hiring Al's Electric?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and they told you there was five hundred to a thousand dollars to adjust the light?
Depending, he has to rent the bucket truck, depending on the rental amount and the block of hours it's going to, um, take. It, it's going to take four minutes per light, he said, but it's just how long the bucket truck, um, needs to be rented for. And that's, that's the expense. I've tried landscapers, I've tried, it's, and because it, it's a town issue, because I've asked them to provide the documentation for me, everyone's afraid to, to do it for me. So I'm going to have to incur the cost, which I'm willing to do. I am just, I just don't want any more issues. I want to be able to run my business and be happy.
I have a question over... Go ahead, Council, who's going to supervise the tilting of these lights, so if she does have a problem, they're facing in the right direction? I mean, is somebody from zoning going to be there and saying, okay, you're going to tilt them at forty-five now, or, you know, at thirty or so? Now, when she leaves and they go back, they turn on, oh, wait a minute, they're going to adjust it again, so, that's all I'm asking. I, I feel for you, so I would just like...
I appreciate that, thank you.
Clarification on it.
Yeah.
Is there a recommended tilting?
I, I provided the pictures...
I'm just saying, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm just asking.
I provided the booklet with the pictures of the lights, you can see the current angle that they're at. Um, and I will tell you, I've had five electricians out there, and they've all said this is not going to change anything. And that's why I'm very scared. Um, because they've all advised me this is not going to make a difference on her property. So again, I'm willing to do it, I just don't want to have to incur a second cost.
Just, just out of curiosity, you talk about, like, blinders on the...
I'm so, um...
You know, like they put blinders on the lights?
No one has recommended that to me.
Huh?
No one has recommended that to me.
Nobody?
Um, they're saying that the, the problem most likely is the glare from the parking lot. Um, I want to get the back parking lot repaved, and I'm, I'm afraid because it's going to create more glare probably, I, I don't know.
I, I think if you have this work done, I would have it, me personally, I would have it done at night, so that somebody can be out there and see if there was a change or not. Because if not, and like they said, the guy leaves, and the next night you got a complaint because nothing's changed, you're going to call those people back again at the tone of five hundred to a thousand dollars.
Then it would be a fifteen hundred dollar expense, because then it's an overnight bucket truck rental.
That's what I'm saying, you know what I mean, you're talking...
So it would, if it was at night, he can't return the bucket truck, so it would be in about fifteen hundred. I've been getting quotes.
Well, I would, I, I'll be honest with you, I would do it at night, I wouldn't do it during the day because, you know, you don't see anything during the day.
Well, that was my point, if you, if you don't angle it the right way, you're going to be going for two thousand instead of fifteen hundred, just saving it for right now.
She said that there are electricians that told her, no matter what they do, it's not going to change anything, you know what I mean, so...
That's what the electricians have said to me, so...
Two things, if I may.
Go ahead, go.
One is, uh, we're going to get Mike Connavalli involved again.
Okay.
And secondly, I have no problems with me being there to help you along together, right? If, if it helps, I'm willing to do it.
I appreciate that, and everyone from the town has been very, very nice to me, and it, it's been nothing but pleasurable to deal with anyone from the town.
Well, thank you.
I will say that, um, and I appreciate that. It's just, my biggest concern was like as a business owner, where do I stand? Like, how much more can I take?
No one wants to hurt your business.
No.
We hope you prosper immensely.
Okay.
I'll reach out to Mike tomorrow, and then we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Perfect, alright.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I'm going to go to, uh... Is anyone here from Morrow Lane? Or Belvedere Boulevard? Or Cottage Ave? Okay, I'm going to go to, uh, item number eighteen, one-way. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on the one-way on Franklin. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. We've already, uh, began to address this tonight. This is the famous one-way street in, uh, um, on Franklin Street. Um, as we talked about earlier, we, this is one step in a multi-step solution to a problem that was, uh, being exhibited on Garfield Street, which is actually approaching a public safety hazard. Where we're talking about ambulances not being able to get to their destinations on a street. Uh, we're talking about, uh, cars, uh, cutting through a residential neighborhood in order to avoid a light on Minto Spring Avenue. So, this is one solution that we thought would help remedy this situation. Um, we have adopted additional solutions to help remedy this situation, including a three-way stop sign on the corner of, um, the intersection of Franklin Street and Garfield Street, so that'll hopefully help with the traffic. We've also, well, there are multiple solutions, I see you shaking your head, but there are multiple solutions, we're getting there. Uh, there, we have also adopted an ordinance to, uh, prevent trucking coming from Minto Spring Avenue into your neighborhood. Um, and Franklin Street was just one other thing. However, it seems to be having a negative impact and driving, um, traffic further into the neighborhood, so I think we should address that, and, um, my position is to return it to a two-way street entirely. Um, but I know there are people here tonight that want to speak on this issue, they're probably going to echo the same concerns and ideas, uh, uh, Mr. President, we want to invite them up.
Is there anyone here would like to speak on the Franklin Street issue? Come back up.
Again, my name is Tina Maderas, thank you for listening to my plight. I live at sixty-one Garfield, and like you said, Franklin, I've never seen a problem with the cut-through traffic. As much as I do see the tractor trailers that come up the street to make the right to go to the liquor store...
Right.
Coming up Franklin and heading towards Minto Spring so that they can then, I guess, get on Minto Spring and go on their way. It has taken, there's been a tractor trailer that took out somebody's wall one day, on, right on the corner. And I mean, the, I always feel the problem is the double traffic, the, the parking on both sides. Franklin, I feel, nobody parks on that street, and everybody goes up and down it usually without any major issues or problems. And I, I, I now am one of those people that causes the traffic through the whole neighborhood. Because I refuse to go out to Minto Spring Avenue to take a right, to get onto Charles Street, and hit a light, and then go the other way. So I drive all the way through Garfield, and through Adams, and up back into Gillen, and onto Charles. I, yeah, Charles Street. So, I mean, we're not solving the traffic problem, we're just dispersing it elsewhere. The cut-through, yeah, some people do cut off Minto Spring to cut through, but... people do cut off Mineral Spring to cut through, but they're not driving at ninety miles an hour to cut through. But people who are now mad that they can't go down are flying through the neighborhood to get through and they don't even know where to go sometimes. You know, now they're trying to cut into the back area where they don't know where it is or go around. Me personally, I have no problem with the need to stop, even though I hate the fact that I come out of my driveway and I have to stop. That's okay. I just would love for Franklin to be back to a two-way.
I think you bring up a good point, too, about trucking coming in from Charles Street to get. So basically, we passed an ordinance to prohibit trucking coming in from Mineral Spring Avenue onto Garfield Street and going through the neighborhood, but it's not solving the situation where you have it coming in from Charles Street.
I see more of it coming up Franklin, down to get to the liquor store. Most of the time it's the liquor store, and I get it. They're coming off the highway, they're trying to get to their destinations. Mineral Spring is a nightmare to get on. So any of us who live on Garfield, if we can go down Franklin and hit Charles that way as opposed to going out to Mineral Spring Avenue and waiting five minutes to be able to make a right, to make another right, to get onto Charles, I mean, I'd drive through the whole neighborhood first. I'd drive three hours out of my way to do avoid Mineral Spring Avenue.
No, I do think it makes perfect sense at this point. Like I was saying, the initial thing that we were trying to accomplish was that people were using that cut-through over there. Now, again, a multifaceted approach, maybe with this parking, because I will say that that part of Garfield Street is very narrow. When you have a lot of traffic going down there and you have kids over there, it's very dangerous. So now, when you have parking on one side, it opens up the street a little bit, makes it a little less dangerous. And in my opinion, no need for the one-way over there to avoid that cut-through at that point because it's just a natural flow at that point. So I'd like to make a motion to refer this matter to the ordinance committee for additional action on Franklin Street.
A motion been made by Counselman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman Amorigi. Any questions?
I have one comment. Mr. President, Ms. Maderas, just so you know, Lieutenant Taverozzi, who we've been dealing with and has been, he's actually gone and knocked on neighbors' doors and he's really been a help. He does recognize the fact that trucks coming off of Charles, turning right onto, towards Mineral Spring could also be an issue. So keep an eye on that. There may be additional action taken on that trucking as well.
I appreciate your time. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number seventeen, I mean nineteen, speeding issues. Counselman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on speeding issues on Tiffany Street. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is another speeding stretch in District Two that I wanted to bring up. I was approached by one of the residents in District Two that lives on Tiffany Street. Tiffany Street seems to be one of those streets that there's a long stretch where there are no stop signs, ends up being a speed track when there's no incentive really for people to slow down. So I know there are a few people here today. Mr. Lee is here from Tiffany Street. I know he wanted to address the council. Okay.
My name is Richard Lee. I live at fifty-five Tiffany Street. I echo what Counselman said. The traffic is getting more and more out of control. The speeding, it is a cut-through street and the lack of stop signs, speed bumps, it's just, it's out of control. In the past, there was a speed bump in front of my house. They took it up one winter for the plows, which I could understand. They never put it back. I've called different people and, you know, trying to get this item resolved. Counselman Famigetti stepped up and he's given us a hand with this. My concern is the neighborhood is turning over from elderly who raised their family and now younger families are coming in with children, which is a great thing. The neighborhood's being rejuvenated, but the safety of it, these children walk to school because of where they live in conjunction to Whalen School. So the parents have to walk them two times a day. And from my house, we can hear them gearing up from the bottom of Pearl Street and it's a direct shot right down to Lexington. I didn't know what to do about it. It gets to the point now that when my wife and I, we have grandchildren, we have to try to make sure that they don't go near the street. But anybody that has a child knows, you see a bouncing ball, most likely it is a running child. It's hard enough when you're doing the twenty mile an hour speed limit, which on the entire stretch of the road isn't posted at all. And I realize ignorance of the laws is no excuse. You drive on the road, you should know the speed limit. There are no signs. Other streets in the neighborhood have signs. We don't have anything. And my, again, my concern is the safety of my neighbors. They're all new neighbors with small children. And I don't know how anybody would live with themselves if something happened. So all I'm asking for is this situation to be looked at and addressed and see if we can figure something out that's amiable to everybody.
Counselman Juice.
Yeah. I'd like to make a recommendation. We send a letter to the police department, ask them for a D-run at the area that he's speaking, so that we have police there every day at certain, different times of the day. And they, and usually they give out, went up tickets in that area. You'll see it either avoiding the area or slowing down one of the two. We've done that in a few other areas and...
Okay, motion's been made by Counselman Juice. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman McCullough. Any questions?
I do have a couple motions after, Mr. President.
There be all those in favor?
Well, Mr. President, I do have a question. So later on the agenda, I have the street for the same exact purpose. I don't know if we can just, in the same letter, request a D-run on both streets?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll do that.
amend the motion.
We'll do that. But we'll get to that at the end. So just, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Counselor.
I have two additional motions, Mr. President. The first one would be that we have our clerk send a letter to the Department of Public Works, asking them to put up the speeding, the speed limit signs as well as signs indicating that drivers should be slowed, that children are in the area.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Counselman Amorigi. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
And my second motion is to refer this matter to the ordinance committee for further action.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman Amorigi. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number twenty, parking issues. Counselman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on parking issues on Dorment Avenue. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. A resident reached out to me. There seems to be teenagers in the area who are parking in front of a specific house, smoking cigarettes, maybe to avoid being in front of their own house. They are from that neighborhood. I would just ask that we, I would make a motion to send this to the ordinance committee for possible action.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman McCullough. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number twenty-one, Central Avenue. Counselman Juice, you request discussion and possible vote on making Central Avenue a one-way permanently, permanently from Fruit Hill Avenue to Cottage Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I got a call from one of the neighbors on Central Ave and she tried to get home one day from Fruit Hill Avenue and apparently there were a lot of buses there and everything and she couldn't make it through. So she figured, let me go up and around, I'll come down one of the side streets and cut back to my house. And the police were at that, right at the street that she took and they wouldn't let her take the left to go to her house. She said, but I lived there. He didn't care. He'd taken a right. So the neighbors in the area, there's like six or seven houses in that section, they'd like to see Central Ave one-way from Fruit Hill Avenue to Cottage Street all the time permanently. Right now, it's only part-time. There's a sign on, I think it's just during school hours, it's one-way. But they want to see it permanently. So there's like a loop there, Cottage, I mean, Central to Cottage, which Cottage takes you out to Fruit Hill and then come in Fruit Hill on Central. So maybe we could send this to the ordinance committee to check this out.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselman Juice. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselman DiLorenzo. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. I can't hear the voices who want that one. Item number twenty-two, flooding issues. Counselman Amorigi requests discussion and possible vote on drainage and flooding issues on Grand Avenue. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular issue, Grand Avenue, actually came before us a couple years ago and I'm not sure what had happened with it. No action was taken, but we all know, everybody sitting up here on this dais knows that flooding and sewage backups have been an issue, especially in the eastern part of town. So we do have a resident here from Grand Avenue, twenty-four Grand Ave actually, Mr. Robert Douglas, who would just like to give a little bit of history. But I will say, he's very thoughtful. He's one of the lucky ones. He's had all of his claims actually paid, unlike some of our other residents. But he has, the issue is, is that structurally, it could happen again and it's not just affecting him, it's affecting a lot of residents in town. So he'd like to just speak on the issue.
Robert Douglas, twenty-four Grand Avenue, North Providence. I've got some handouts here if you... ...would start the flow of... So I'll wait to speak until everybody gets it on. So I believe what everybody has in front of them right now is, sorry, it's not the best design here. I just did a Google map print. Highlighted Woodward Road, Alexander, then Grand Avenue on the bottom. So Woodward Road has an overflow drain and that is overflow drain A, which feeds into overflow drain B on down to Alexander. Alexander then flows down to overflow C, which is in front of my house, which flows back into overflow D back onto Alexander. So in front of my house, I have water coming down from Woodward Road, Alexander, Grand Avenue, then my house, in front of my house, diverts it to back down to Alexander. That was done fourteen years ago when I had my first sewer backup, when it was a very large backup. Like Kenny said, I have my previous three backups, the latest one back in May, have all been covered by insurance companies. So I've been luckily on my end, been benefited of that. The trust paid out too, and travelers I'm talking to right now in negotiations and settling my current one right now. There is a, probably a fourth one that's going to be coming across your desks very soon. I have structural damage now from this. Every time it rains, I shouldn't say every time, good majority of the time when it rains, overflow C here, it can't take all that water. So what happens is it comes into my yard, my neighbor's yard. It has washed out my driveway, my sidewalk, my neighbor's yard. If you look at it, it's a deep V. And this has been going on for many, many years. Doing the history on my street, this has been a chronic issue for about twenty years now. All houses on my side have put in some sort of a claim in the past twenty years, have all been paid out for. I don't know exactly how to present it to here, other than travelers asked me to present, get an estimate to repair what the structural damage is. But I have, I'm going to be hesitant on that because if I present that repairs to the board here and it gets approved, but the street's not affixed, we're looking at another claim in five, six years. I've had the same claim in my house for three years. I've had to redo my bathroom, the same bathroom, three times in fourteen years. So what I'm asking for you guys and ladies, if this was happening in front of your house and your resident, would it be acceptable to see, every time it rains, I have video, I kind of keep rolling two or three years. I've sent it to some, but I have it on my computer if anybody wants to see it tonight of, it just, it's a water flow down my driveway, down my sidewalk, down my yard. I've had to put a retaining wall in my backyard because I've washed, probably in the last thirteen years ago, I washed a couple of feet in my backyard. Put a retaining wall, had a backfill of that soil. So if somebody wants to look at that video tonight, totally, you guys have a full plate here. But I work from home, so I have a very open schedule. My door is open to anyone who is, anybody from the town, call me, call my cell phone. I'll be happily to walk you through videos. I can send all the videos to everybody. But I am definitely looking for help. Because the structural damage this year has probably been some of the worst. And what I'm really afraid now is the winter coming with the freeze door. And if this freeze door hurts my foundation, that's going to be a separate huge problem on my end, if water actually starts getting to my house from my foundation. So...
Counselman DiLorenzo has a question?
Hi.
Yep.
Sorry to be troubled.
No problem.
I'm not too familiar with what you're doing here, but I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
One, the water, is it a storm drain or is it sewer?
Storm drain.
It's a storm drain. Has anyone from the town come from the storm drain?
Yes and no. So they had to rebuild the storm drain already two or three times. This storm drain was done very quickly in front of my house because my first backup, this storm drain was tied into the sewer. So some things happened and if you want, we can inform detail on a different audience in a different time. The second time the backup happened, the storm drain still wasn't fixed and it was fixed very rapidly. And I don't know if it was fixed with the proper piping and the proper depth and the proper angles. I can tell you the storm drain that was put in front of my house, the pipe is very small and it cannot handle all this water coming down.
Okay. The reason why I ask that question is, we have Lou Lee, who is our storm drain guy, and I was wondering if he went off to see it. That's the reason why I asked that question. And if he hasn't, maybe we should send him out there to have him take a look at it. He's a nice guy. I'm sure he's willing to go, you know?
So I know I had a bunch of people in my, my house the day after Mother's Day, that Monday, the last storm drain, they blocked off my street and there was a lot of people there. I know Bernie, he took me off, took me off to the side, talked to me and said, you know, we know the issue. The water pitch coming down Alexander does feed into Grand. He said, but we was in the books this year to get it fixed, but we pushed off the next year. That's great, but unfortunately, all these years, like I said, my...
Did he say that this year or next year?
What's that?
Did he say that this year for next year?
But unfortunately, right now, I have my side, I mean, like I said, anybody's open to come to my house. You can see all the soil that has roared. My sidewalk on my side of my house, you can look underneath it now. It is cracked. My porch is cracked from this. My driveway has sunk in from near my foundation. I mean, how much, in the past fourteen years, I have been very vocal. And what I'm trying to do is, again, thank you for everybody's time tonight, but I want to do this nicely and, but I'm kind of running out of options and I can't thank you enough. This is the first time I was actually coming here to speak to a board, hearing me. So I appreciate that a lot.
Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this, as I stated in the beginning, it's really a town-wide problem and we're not trying to use Mr. Douglas as an example, but he's one of the worst cases in the sense that the same exact issue keeps happening. And I did go out to his house the other morning and literally his stairs that connect to the house are, you can see the erosion patterns. I mean, it's eating away at his foundation. I know there's a list, there's a master list at the DPW of these things that are supposed to be addressed, but I'd also like to see the town take affirmative steps to address the problem from a holistic perspective, not just piecemeal. So what I'd like to do actually is make a motion tonight to send this matter to the finance committee and ask a DPW director to report with a list of all known claims of this nature in the last five years and also to come prepared to discuss what the cost of fixing these drains and backup issues will be, as well as the timelines.
Okay, motion's been made by Counselman Amorigi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselman Famigetti. Any questions? There be none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
But again, I want to leave, doors open. Anybody, the board, works for the town, give me a call. I'm literally at my house every day working. I work from home, so.
Thank you.
Doors open.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-three, speeding issues. Counselman Amorigi requests discussion and possible vote on speeding issues on Thelma Street. Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So yes, we already kind of touched on this when we discussed the earlier issue about Tiffany. Basically, what's happening on Thelma is there's a part of Thelma Street where one side is residential and the other side is commercial, which is very wide. And people coming off of Tiffany are basi- And people coming off of Tiffany are basically starting there and flying towards Rosner and Whalen Elementary School. So, I'm just gonna make a motion to refer this to ordinance, and invite the police representative to come and give us an opinion as to remedial measures we can take to rectify this.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Matone, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. I'll go back to my items and be very quick. Item number fifteen, block storm drain. Council President Orellola requests discussion and possible vote on a block storm drain on Moore Lane. I'd like to entertain a motion to send a letter to DPW to address this block storm drain. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Matone, is there a second? Second by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions? Maybe a none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number sixteen, broken sidewalk. Council President Orellola requests discussion and possible vote on alternative solutions to the repair of the broken sidewalk on Belvedere Boulevard. I'd like to entertain a motion to send a letter to DPW to come up with an alternative solution, 'cause I know we're not responsible for sidewalks, but this one is actually going into the street in front of sixty-three Belvedere Boulevard. Motion's been made by Councilman DiLorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. And item number seventeen, removal of berms. Council President Orellola requests discussion and possible vote on removal of berms on Cottage Avenue, and repair the new paving. I put this on the agenda because someone reached out to me, where they put berms in front of their house, and because of those berms and the pitch of the new paving, it's now flooding the front yard and driveway. So I'd like to entertain a motion to send a letter to DPW addressing that issue. Motion's been made by Councilman Matone, seconded by Councilman Juicedi, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-four, board appointments. Town Council discussion and possible vote with regard to appointments to made to the following boards. Purchasing Board.
Mr. President?
Councilman Matone.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Paul Valier to the purchasing board, he's resident of District Three. I think he'd be a great addition to that board.
Okay, motions were made by Councilman Matone, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions?
Who's spot is he taking?
Emily. Okay, motion's been made.
I think it's ten Dale Road.
Dale Drive.
Ten.
Okay, motion's been made, and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, zoning. Hello, I wish to express my interest in being appointed as the minority member of the zoning board. I currently serve as the alternate. Thank you very much for your consideration, Anthony Costello, forty-three Dickinson Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero-two-nine-zero-four. Do I have a motion to appoint Anthony Costello? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicedi, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Matone, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-five, liquor license, entertainment license renewals. Discussion and possible vote to authorize the town clerk to advertise the liquor and entertainment renewals for two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, to be heard on November fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six-thirty P.M. Do I have a motion to authorize the clerk to advertise? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicedi, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-six, claims submitted. Town Council discussion and possible vote with regard to claims received from the following. Justin Disroches, twenty-five South Brookside Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island. Robert Giuliano, seventeen Gray Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do I have a mo, can I entertain a motion to refer these to the Claims Committee?
Don't move.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicedi, seconded by Councilman DiLorenzo, any questions? Maybe a none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-seven, Finance Committee report, Town Council. Discussion and possible vote with regard to the Finance Committee report to be presented by Councilman Amorigi. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance Committee met on September tenth at six P.M. Present were myself, the other members of the committee, Councilman Matone and Famigetti, Councilman DiLorenzo was there, as well as the Colonial Power Group, Mark Capodona and Tom Ahern. The first issue that we considered were the abatements over a thousand dollars, all were approved. The tax assessor, Tom Kane, was there, he explained to us what the reasoning was behind each, and we found them to be warranted. The second and last issue we took up was the consultant, or the review of the consultant agreement between, or the proposed consultant agreement between the Town of North Providence and the Colonial Power Group. As I stated, there were representatives there from Colonial Power, and what we did was, we had them address some of the concerns and questions that our constituents have voiced to us. You know, I have the written report in front of you, I don't need to necessarily read each and every point. But some of the key points that I think are worth mentioning is, there's been some confusion amongst the constituents as to, if we enter this consultant agreement, are we tying ourselves to, on behalf of the residents, have them purchase any power from another source other than National Grid? The answer to that is no, it's a consultant agreement. So what we would be doing, if we enacted this, is the Colonial Power Group, and as I stated, they're here tonight as well, they would go out into the marketplace, and they would secure bids from energy producers. They would then come back and make a recommendation to the town as to what the best deal is, and they would present the town with a contract. At that time, with the Town Council's approval, the mayor could then sign off on behalf of the end-users, which are the residents, to enter a contract with them. They would then become the power provider over National Grid, although the charge would still appear on your National Grid bill. And the idea is, not only does it save residents money, depending on their usage, it also provides stability, because as we know, National Grid has to go out to bid about every five months, and in doing so, there's wild price fluctuations. I believe right now, they're proposing a price increase of seventeen percent, for example. So this is a way in which to counteract that. As stated at the previous Town Council meeting, this is not the final step. If we were tonight to approve the Town Council entering into this consultant agreement, Colonial Power next has to go in front of the Public Utilities Commission, because this would be a case of first impression before them. The Public Utilities Commission would either give them authority to operate in the state of Rhode Island, or not. And if they do, give them the authority to do so, what they would then do is give them the parameters by which they have to operate. After that, there would be a public awareness campaign, there would be, basically anything the Town Council wants done, Colonial Power is willing to do in conjunction with us, to educate the public as to how they can opt in and opt out of this, as well as what the pros, cons, and any other aspect that needs to be addressed. Finally, as part of this process, and at this point, we'd probably be looking at spring or summer, Colonial Power, once they found what they think is the best agreement for the town, would come back to us, and the Town Council would have to approve the mayor, signing that contract on behalf of the end-users. That's a general overview of what was presented to us, there was quite a bit more. The meeting lasted about an hour, but, like I said, Colonial Power is here to address any questions that the council or the residents may have, and perhaps I could address some of those questions as well.
Councilman?
I have a few questions, and we'll see what we can do here. My first question is, first of all, I think the Council may really fail to say that once this is agreed, everyone in this town is signed up for it, I don't think you mentioned that, just wanna make sure that we all know that. Okay, do we, as the legislative body of this government of the town, do we have the right to dictate to any constituents that we have, where they get the electricity? That's a question to us. I wanna know if we have that right to do that, as lawyers, so on, so yeah, come right up.
State your name for the record, Mark Capodona, Colonial Power.
Currently, you do not. You would not have the right to do that until you receive the order from the PUC, allowing you to enact the statute. Municipal aggregation.
Okay, so currently, as it stands right now, we don't have that authority to do that.
That is correct.
Okay. So, having said that, my second question, to answer this, is, if in fact you were to get it, we're thinking about this or whatever, I wanna know why this hasn't, this electricity thing has not gone up to bid? If in fact it's gonna be a town entity, why hasn't it gone up to bid? Why haven't we had other people come in and take a look, may I finish? Take a look as to who can give us a better deal, if in fact we are gonna go forward with it? I, and if it's gonna be a town entity, and correct me if I'm wrong, National Grid, Town of North Providence, Colonial Power, our savings of a dollar, twenty-five, a dollar fifty?
So, I can try to get to all your questions. So, it won't be Colonial Power, right? So we work for you, it's going to be a town program. It's my understanding, just as in mass, energy is thirty B exempt, it's not required to go to bid. So for some reason, there was no bid process, but there could be if you so desired. It is not required under the law.
Well, so here, okay, may I stop?
Sure.
Here's my question, my question is, if in fact that bill is gonna read National Grid, and then according to what you said at the meeting, it was gonna be powered by Town of North Providence?
Yeah, so it would say the supplier's name, and then North Providence Aggregation.
Okay, so if it's, if it has North Providence on there, somewhere, shape or form?
Yes.
Then why did it not go up to bid, why would it not go up to bid? Instead of just handing it to you, why would it not go to bid?
I can't answer your question, I'm not certain, that's a town question.
Okay. Third question. In the Finance Committee, Colonial Power said that Mass would only sign up for twelve months at a time. Massachusetts would only sign up for a one-year period at a time.
I think you might have missed.
That's what I thought you said?
Okay.
I could be very wrong?
I have lots of contracts, thirty-six months, just depends on market conditions.
Okay, so with us, I think you were looking for, 'cause I got the contract here, that you were looking for five years.
That is, okay, so you're getting confused, that is the contract between the town and the consultant, Colonial Power.
Right.
What the town gets for a contract for its energy supplier, is something that's coming way down the road. That is just.
I'm not concerned about that, I'm concerned about the town.
Yes.
So the town, when you sign up, how long do you sign up?
With this, with the, with ours, the consultant, it's a five-year contract.
That's what I mean, so, but I didn't, didn't I not hear that it was, Mass is only twelve months at a time?
No, that was incorrect.
No, most of them are.
Maybe I heard.
Okay.
Okay, hypothetical, if I may, just to, just for my own verification.
Absolutely.
Let's say this goes through, and there's two thousand people that sign up.
Yes.
Once they sign up, 'cause they're automatically signed up, they say, you know, I don't want it, none of your business, what I, where I get my electric, a thousand, fifteen hundred of them opt out.
Yes.
Does the price change?
No.
Okay, so then, if the price doesn't change, why does it have to be a resolution through the Town Council for you to get it? Why not a door-to-door campaign if it doesn't make a difference in the price?
Okay, so the way energy works, we're trying to create a low profile so that we can do that. So, I'm sure you have the exact same process here. Attorney General has stated that these individual contracts don't work. In Massachusetts, ninety-nine percent of them don't work. And why don't they work? Because individually, I'm gonna go out and buy power, and I have no idea how many people are going to take it. With the municipal aggregation program, I have a very good idea, how many people are going to take it, how long they're gonna have it for, and what I can serve it at. The unfortunate thing is, with deregulation, and I think you're going to find the Attorney General here is gonna deliver a very similar report shortly, you're gonna see those individual contracts are not something that you wanna get involved in. This requires us and professionals to look through that contract, so there's no small print, and there's no opt-out fees or anything. We can look out professionally for the people that can't do it for themselves.
Okay. I got a couple of questions. Councilman?
Please. Yeah. How many people, how many, how many times has your company been higher than National Grid?
Can't answer, so.
Have they ever been, let me put it this way?
Yes. Absolutely.
Your price has been higher than National Grid?
Yes, and just so we know, it's not our prices. We work for you, we just bring you back the price. So, National Grid in Massachusetts procures a little bit different than you do here in Rhode Island. The prices change every, every six months in Massachusetts. And during that time, we have a summer rig which is much lower, so right now, we're paying around ten-eight per kilowatt hour. Starting November first is going to thirteen-nine cents per kilowatt hour. So lots of the customers we have currently might be in the low tens, and they're doing that for the next thirty-six months. Next summer, the rate might be nine-five. People can opt out, they don't have to.
What's the difference between Massachusetts and Rhode Island?
So Rhode Island procures, National Grid actually has a little bit more flexibility down here, on how they procure, but the rate does change only twice a year, on the residential side of things.
On, where's this?
In Rhode Island or Mass?
In Rhode Island.
In Rhode Island, it still only changes twice, but they're able to procure more often than they are in Massachusetts.
Okay. So if we're, if we're at a certain rate for, let's say, the first six months?
Yes.
And you're higher those six months?
Yes. Why would we start a program? We would start a program. That's the beauty of aggregation, we get a chance to look at the marketplace. We're gonna know where we are.
We already told, like, the way you presented it to us, according to the way Councilman DiLorenzo said it, you said to us, everybody's gotta change into the town.
Nope, not true.
Maybe not true. That's what was presented here.
Everyone that's on standard office service, if you had made another choice, you would stay with your supplier. Only if you were on standard office service, would you be mailed to when you'd have a choice. Everyone is eligible, counselor, to join the program if they so desire. They just need to check and make sure that there isn't a fee or penalty to leave their program.
That is the way it was presented here, it was presented, and maybe I'm wrong. That everybody had to be switched to your.
Everyone is immediately switched over to.
Not true.
To the new, hang on a second, to the new program.
Right.
Unless otherwise, unless you have a different aggregate already. Prior to that, in other words, I don't, I use National Grid. So when you sign up for this program, this company automatically is now.
My company.
Is my company.
That, that's technically incorrect.
Well, that's what.
So before the program starts, everyone will receive a mail. Everyone will have a choice before it ever starts. If you have any reason you don't like the program, sign the, instead of backing out of the program, you never were in the program. If you don't do anything, you'll automatically be enrolled. That's the way the program works, one-hundred-and-ten percent.
It wasn't, it wasn't presented to us that way.
I wanna apologize if there was miscommunication, that's the way we run eighty-seven programs up in Massachusetts.
I think there's some, if I may, there's some nuances here, that this is, this is a confusing subject for people. Most people don't dissect their energy bills, so I think we're kind of misunderstanding or misrepresenting in certain cases, what exactly this is. For, again, this is a consultant agreement. We're essentially, by signing this, all we'd be authorizing them to do is go to the PUC, and then if they get permission, we're assuming they will, to operate in Rhode Island from the PUC, then they go into the marketplace and get bids from all these different suppliers, and they come back to the town. Now I know personally, and we're big on business here, that none of us would vote to approve a contract that would be adverse to any of our residents, and I know the mayor certainly wouldn't sign anything like that. We never have to sign a contract with anyone. We may decide that the marketplace is such that National Grid offers the better rates, in which case, we never, we never switch over to municipal aggregation.
I agree with you one-hundred percent, but that isn't what was presented here. If this company comes in, and we accept them as the rate getter.
Yeah.
Okay? Then we had to, everybody in the Town of North Providence, other than if you were the third party, right? Had to belong to them.
Only if we sign the contract with the supplier, not.
That's what I'm saying, if we signed the contract, like he said, we're automatically signing everybody up into the town.
No, everybody will get a mailer.
Whether we wanted to or not.
No, everybody will get a, first of all, everybody will get, there'll be public education, so there'll be forums at the senior centers.
That is what was explained to us, that wasn't, that was never presented to us.
No, it was at the last meeting, Manny.
Oh.
And so, after the public education campaign, which they're willing to do whatever it is that we want them to do, and they're footing the bill for it, they will get a mailer. It's an initial opt-in, if you will, we're calling it an opt-out, but essentially, it's giving the people the choice. Here's what's gonna happen, if you wanna be part of this program, you do nothing. If you wanna opt out, you sign this, send it back, you'll be opted out.
They know it.
No, I, that's, you know, again, it's confusing, and there's been a lot of different things said, and some misrepresentations. That's how it works, it provides stability for the people of the town. There's been this argument of, we as a legislative body, can we make somebody do anything? We're not making them do anything, we're giving essentially them an option. Right now, they're being forced, most people don't know that there's even third-party suppliers, and they are just stuck using National Grid, and they're subject to these wild price fluctuations. We're now giving them an option to be part of something that, especially for the elderly, is gonna give them stability over the course of years. And to address one other point that you brought up, Councilman, is that if at a certain point during the length of our contract, National. length of our contract, National Grid's rates go below, they have the ability to go out and negotiate with the supplier to either get those rates reduced or to do what they call blend and extend, which is to extend the contract for lower rates long-term.
Well, that, that was another question I had, Councilman, was that if in fact, to renegotiate the price, they want to extend the contract, which was not, to me, is not good for the town. In order, in order to get the cost down, you have to extend that two-year period to add another five years for it. So in order for you to, to maintain that level, they want the town to extend the contract. Am I correct when I say that? Because that's how it came to me.
Yeah, so, so what would actually happen is they would, but I'm just going to use it could be a constellation. They say, okay, for the next six months, you have six months left in your contract and, and the rate is ten and the basic service is at eight. Okay, we're going to do this for another twelve months and our rate can be seven and a half for the next twelve months. That's where the energy market is today. It has been done in the past. It could be done here. It just gives the town the ability to, to actually negotiate electricity rates. You try to do that with National Grid today, I don't think you're going to have much luck.
And I would say that that's, that's good for the town. It gives us flexibility. It's also worth noting that after this has been in the paper, that Smithfield is now looking into doing the same thing, and they actually specifically cited us. It, it's considered in Massachusetts to be best practices to do aggregation. And like Mr. Capodone said, the Attorney General's offices in both states eventually are going to recommend that private third-party providers are, are essentially, unfortunately, very unstable for the end user and aggregation is the way to go.
You know, I, I have to tell you that I'm totally in favor of a third party that everyone can save money. I'm, I'm in favor. Here's my problem. I think it's intrusive that we go and, and everybody has to opt in or you have to opt out. I think it's intrusive on our part. If he was to go to door-to-door, your customers to go door-to-door and knock on the door and say, we, Mr. and Mrs. Di Lorenzo, we're Colonial Power and we want to give, we can save you a couple of dollars a month. Let me make my decision. I don't want anybody else making my decision on electric. I don't want making, on my cable bill. I don't want, it's, to me, it's intrusive on, on a elected official's part.
And, and we, we have, I kid you not, there, that is the issue with municipal aggregation and opt-out. Unfortunately, it's the only thing that works in the deregulated marketplace. And I, I'd say that, you know, munie ag stands on its, on its own two feet. When you see what it can do.
Can I ask one question? What is the savings to the town?
To the town?
Yeah, you're telling me the town's signing up for this, the residents?
No, no.
We, we're allowing them to-
If, once we allow them to, to aggregate the power, to get the power, the bill now has the Town of North Providence on there, which if, if it has the Town of North Providence, my question is, does that now become an entity such as the Salvatore Mancini life? If it becomes an entity, why hasn't it gone up for bid? Why do we just choose this company and enter? If it's, if it's got our name on there, then the town should take a bid on what we're doing if in fact that's the way you want to go.
So I'm, I'm going to assume Colonial Power's like a broker.
At the end of this, so at the beginning, we're a consultant. At the end, when we bring you the prices, we're, we turn it into a broker?
Broker.
Yes. Yes.
Councilman? If I could just say one thing, Councilman Di Lorenzo, I, I tend to agree with you when you're talking about intrusiveness.
True.
And what I've said before when we're talking about this, I think this is a novel idea and unfortunately, you kind of have to stretch the bounds of what you're comfortable with at certain times. And that's sort of where I am. And I've said it before and I'll say it again, I won't feel comfortable moving forward to the final step until there is sufficient public education over here, which I, I am satisfied that you're willing to do, by the way. And I do think that there is a timeline ahead of us where, and we are getting out ahead of, ahead of everything over here, so that I, I'm hopeful and confident that there will be significant public education out there to a point where it is less intrusive by this body to force something because now it's out there and people will say, okay, well, I'm looking out for that letter now. Because if I really don't want a part of this, I'm looking out for this letter. That is what I'm hopeful for and I think that is what, the, the road that we're traveling on.
And make no mistake, no one's going to try to hold anyone in this program for any, any reason. There is no reason. All we're doing is bringing a choice that does not exist today. And I understand, I fully understand that people have an issue with the way that choice is brought, but it's the only way the energy works efficiently, to bring the best pricing to, to the end user.
Go ahead, Councilman.
So can I just ask a simple question because I think at this point, we're, we're beating a dead horse. If we authorize the town to enter into this consultant agreement, if later, before we sign any contract, we're either unsatisfied with the way our constituents feel about the, the process, if we're unsatisfied with the prices in the contract that you bring to us, we never have to sign anything.
That is correct.
So we're just giving you the option to explore something that might be a great thing for this town.
One hundred and ten percent. At any point, you can break the contract. The thirty days notice, it's right in the contract.
So, so is there a reason why this contract was brought to the Finance Committee, last finance thing? Is there a reason why this contract was brought? This one?
That's the consultant agreement.
That's the consultant.
That's what.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about, potentially voting on tonight.
Okay, does anyone else have any more follow-up on this? All right, for the record, we'd like to thank you for coming out tonight. I know this is a confusion, confusing issue, and I'd like to echo Councilman Famigetti's remarks. I think once the public education is, is, you know, the public is informed more, I think we can make an informative decision. I like to commend Councilman Amerigi though for really diving into this issue and dissecting it because it is a very, very confusing issue. I could see where the elderly might be confused, but I, I'd like to commend his leadership on this issue because he's really broke it down and explained it to me and the rest of us as best he could, and I, I thank you for that.
Thank you.
So, with that being said, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept the Finance Committee report as presented.
So move.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Matone. Any further questions?
Can I make another motion?
Let me get that one first. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it.
Aye.
For the record, one nay.
What's the nay on?
The report.
The report's a report.
The report includes a few of the-
There's no recommendation.
There's no recommendation in the report, no.
Councilman given.
So I'd like to make a motion that the town council authorizes the town to enter into the consultant agreement with Colonial Power and let the process begin.
Okay, a motion been made by Councilman Amerigi. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Matone. Any questions? There be an unall, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nays.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote. Councilman Matone?
Aye.
Councilman Di Lorenzo?
Aye.
Councilman Amerigi?
Aye.
Councilman Juasty?
Aye.
Councilman Famigetti?
Aye.
Councilman Bacala?
I said nay.
Okay, and the chair votes aye.
Four ayes, three nays.
Okay, for the record. Okay?
Passes.
Okay, passes four to three. Okay, item number twenty-eight, Ordinance Committee Report. Town-
We're going to do the last, next, next finance. We're going to do the key report.
Item number twenty-eight, Ordinance Committee Report. Town council discussion and action with regard to the Ordinance Committee report to be presented by Councilman Famigetti. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President. There were multiple items on the Ordinance Committee's agenda a few weeks ago. Most of them are staying in ordinance to continue our study of them. However, we had two items coming out. One will actually be negated by tonight's action. That was review of section seven oh five of the zoning ordinance with regard to that fifteen ninety-nine Smith Street property in which we were going to send a communication to Mike Carnavale, but I think that has been remedied based on tonight's discussions. The second item to come out of the Ordinance Committee will actually be on item number So I don't know if you want to vote on the report first and then go to that.
Okay.
Okay, a motion to approve the report as presented by Councilman Famigetti?
So move.
Motion been made by Councilman Matone. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Juasty. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it? You want to go to twenty-nine?
Yes.
Okay, item number twenty-nine, Ordinance Introduction. Discussion and possible vote to introduce ordinance number nineteen dash zero-one-four, mending chapter nineteen, article ten, section nineteen, dash forty-seven A of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence entitled Three Way Stop Signs for a Stop Sign at the intersection of Orlando Drive and Long Meadow Drive. Do I have a motion to introduce?
I have a motion to introduce and advertise for public hearing.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala. Any questions? There be an unall, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number thirty, Tax Addendas. Town council discussion and action, possible vote with